Okay, Elizabeth, we will now go to our fifteen-minute public comment period. Let me just emphasize again that you will have three minutes. And I would please ask that you be as respectful as you can, and go ahead, Elizabeth.
The first person signed up is Beth McGinty.
You there, Beth? Okay, Elizabeth, maybe we can come back or go ahead and call the next name.
Next one is Jennifer Miller.
I think I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Miller. I'm a clinical social worker, and I also happen to be the spouse of a Bellingham police officer. And I'd like to talk with you tonight a little bit about public safety. I'd like to first thank the mayor and council for your support thus far for public safety as you've begun to look at budgets. I'd also like to draw your attention to something that's going to require a long-term commitment beyond this budget cycle. In the proposed police budget, there's one position being left unfilled, and those dollars transferred to Grace for hiring an additional social worker and three positions changed to behavioral health officer roles. As a mental health provider, I'm absolutely in support of more mental health services in our community, and I appreciate that we're investing in existing programs that have already shown their effectiveness. But we need to call this what it is: a reduction of our police staffing to perform police functions by four positions. I'm concerned about the public safety ramifications of cutting an already deeply understaffed department. I recognize that this is a budget you're none of us asked for, where decreases in budgets are a reality that you have been forced to reckon with. But I want to urge you to make a commitment to replacing those officer positions in future budgets. I hope that you're aware, though I highly doubt the public is, that there are times when our city of ninety thousand is patrolled by four officers and one sergeant, literally one officer per eighteen thousand citizens. I find the staffing levels troubling. In addition to a patrol division that's stretched beyond thin, nearly all of BPD's proactive police functions have been or will be cut. A year ago, Special Investigations Unit responsible for addressing issues such as drug trafficking, human trafficking, and gangs was cut. This year, the Neighborhood Anti-Crime Team responsible for proactive community policing was cut. In January, we'll no longer have bicycle units, something the downtown businesses have long depended on for keeping our downtown vibrant and safe. At some point, we can no longer proudly talk about a commitment to community policing if we don't have the staffing to fill community policing positions. As you look at funding streams to address homelessness and mental health, I urge you to be creative in finding that funding for these important needs. However, I also want to be clear that our police department is already understaffed to do the jobs we ask of them, and the police budget is not the place to find those dollars. Bellingham enjoys one of the most progressive, well-trained and professional police departments in the state. It's not perfect, because no agency is. But at a time when the country, across the country, we're seeing what can happen when officers are less qualified, less equipped, or less well-trained, I hope that I can urge you to continue your commitment to prioritizing public safety so that our department can once again be staffed properly in order to do the proactive, positive, and community policing that the citizens of Bellingham have come to expect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person is Dan Johnson, senior.
Go ahead. Yes. I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, members of the council. And if Mayor Fleetwood is present, thank you, mayor, as well, for hearing this evening. I will go ahead and just reread from an email that I had sent earlier this week. I do oppose the defunding of the Bellingham Police Department. In the fall of two thousand and nineteen, I sold my business, which was and still is Johnson's Towing. I started in the towing business in the spring of nineteen ninety-seven, and one of the first things I was exposed to was the interaction between law enforcement and the towing industry. The agency worked with the most was the Bellingham Police Department, and I have to say that over twenty years, it was an absolute pleasure to work alongside those men and women. I watched as they helped keep our city streets safe from DUI and suspended drivers, performed intricate crash scene investigations, protected our ports of injury with canines, and as well as the development of the bomb squad and the SWAT teams. We sometimes forget that we are the first big city on the I-5 corridor coming in from Canada, and having a highly-trained and accredited police agency helping maintain the rule of law on all fronts is invaluable. With regard to the accreditation, it is worth mentioning that the Bellingham Police Department is one of fifty-seven law enforcement agencies out of three hundred in the state of Washington that has not only met the standard of accreditation in two thousand and fourteen, but earlier this year, they met the standards for re-accreditation, meaning that the department follows or exceeds industry best practices and standards. I have actually seen firsthand the results in some of these best practices. As I mentioned before, I was in the towing industry, and as we all know, not everyone is happy about having their vehicle impounded. On more than one occasion, it was necessary to call the Bellingham Police Department to our facility to de-escalate and mediate a situation with an upset vehicle owner. It is these instances that I witnessed the ability of the officers to properly handle the task at hand and finish with the resolve that allowed the process to move to the next step. What I have seen over the years from this department is proof positive that they are doing it right. Please understand that does not happen by accident. Once the officers are hired by the Bellingham Police Department, they are trained, trained, and then trained some more. This training is what makes them great at policing and solving crimes. Anyone who wants to challenge that can ask a gentleman currently in Walla Walla serving life imprisonment named Kenneth Bianchi, aka The Hillside Strangler. It was gritty, precise, and intricate police work by the Bellingham Police Department that led to the apprehension of this serial killer in nineteen seventy-nine. And that level of excellence is a standard still be used by the Bellingham Police Department today. In closing, the words "defund the police" is a battle cry from a group of people who will greatly benefit from lawlessness and long before we have anarchy in the streets, and then it will be too late. Again, I oppose the defunding of the Bellingham-
Thank you very much, sir. Next.
Next person is Kendra Cook.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm Kendra Cook, and I'm here to request increased funding for the anti, especially the bomb unit. So during, of three specialized police officers are traffic officer, evidence and ID officer, and crime scene investigator. They are the rarest of officers in the USA because they are also bomb technicians. The fourth bomb technician is also a canine handler of Canine Raven, who is an explosive detection dog, and you met Raven back in January. And Raven was purchased by donated funds from keeping canines in Keflar with Officer Horton. And so these officers, they need increased funding for training, equipment, and safety protection. Their bomb suit is thirty-five thousand dollars and needs replacing every five years, and they need a new bomb suit. The bomb robot's over five hundred thousand dollars and needs replacing, and grants are not readily available. Required monthly training is sixteen hours for bomb technician duties, two hundred hours a year for Canine Raven's continuous education. And every three years, the bomb technicians need recertification in Huntsville, Alabama. That course is taught by the FBI in collaboration with the US Army for a week-long recertification course. It's the only training facility in the USA for bomb and also hazardous work. And so the expense training is not cheap. And if you wanted to be a bomb technician, it takes six weeks to be a live-in, and you have to get to Huntsville facility. You have to make, meet a certain standard for height and weight to fit in the bomb suit, which is very difficult to do, and also not be claustrophobic. So these are very rare, rare positions. The Bellingham Police Department bomb technicians have twenty to forty-five calls a year from the Canadian border to Marysville, in addition to their other police work duties. Canine Raven and Officer Horton are seen at the ferry terminals, airport, border, in addition to responding to possible suspicious explosives. There has been extreme dangerous activity involving terrorists at these locations as articles that I have sent to you. In fact, the public does not know that the bomb suit does not cover the technician's hands. This allows for fine motor skills for the bomb suit technician. This also means, however, one error and the technician's hands will be blown off. Training means no errors and perfection the first time and every time is needed. Therefore, funding to match the excellence needed for their skills is crucial. Domestic terrorism is something that Bellingham does not think about. The Seattle Fusion Center with Homeland Security had a four-hour class at the Bellingham Police Department for anti-terrorism training two years ago. The bomb unit needs increasing in funding to maintain the safety of the general public, which is not aware of the risks. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you.
Travis Eller.
Yeah, hi. I'd just like to say that I think it's important that the city council remember the community members that would be much better served with a reallocation of funds away from the police that repressed them and towards services that actually help them.
Thank you, sir.
Dana Cutherson. Hello?
Yes.
It is with a heavy heart that I share this public comment. My requests are as reasonable as any mother is asking for a safe world for her children. Three years ago, I finally discovered the cause for my decade-long struggle with chronic migraines. To my surprise, by trial and error, I learned that I have adverse reactions to wireless radiation from Wi-Fi routers, cell phones, and cell towers. It has brought huge relief to discover this because now I have reduced my symptoms by using wired internet. This means an ethernet cord to my laptop. Because of my personal journey, I began reading and contacting scientists, asking questions about the safety of wireless radiation. The answers I received were worse than expected. Wireless radiation is associated with headaches, dizziness, fatigue, and anxiety in many, many individuals. Even if this were not the case, major studies have evidence of DNA damage, and the WHO classifies wireless radiation as a possible carcinogen. If Bellingham City Council complies with the industry lobbying agency, the FCC, you are allowing microwave-emitting devices to be irradiating our city at close range to people's homes. I do not own a cellphone to also reduce my children's exposure, and I therefore do not give my consent to have my home irradiated with gigahertz frequencies under the guise of 5G. When people discover that the scientific debate surrounding the safety of wireless is about as legitimate as the debate was over tobacco science, they will wonder that such a technology was rolled out in Bellingham without serious resistance by our local government. We can't let this happen. Please pass a resolution to the federal government demanding safety testing be completed prior to exposing our children to this latest and greatest technology. We already have a high-speed and secure technology in fiber-optic cables. This is the future: fiber to our homes, not fiber to 5G cells on utility poles. This way, we can opt for a wire connection because choosing health is a fundamental right.
Thank you.
Amanda Stewart.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Amanda, and I am a Wacom DSA member. I'm here tonight, joining the overwhelming number of Bellingham residents who have been contacting this council and this city's mayor for months, demanding that you defund the police by at least fifty percent in this budget, and that money goes towards housing, healthcare, and social services. In other words, the things that will actually keep us safe. Other departments have not been told to be creative. I don't see why this doesn't follow suit into police. The city council, or the last city council meeting, included textbook displays of white fragility from the city council members. From Lilliquist's patronizing assertion that the city residents paying attention to city politics are just too stupid to understand the policies that have a direct effect on our lives, to Vargas's overwrought personal justification for inaction, apparently if you have brown friends and your support for policies that promote racist outcomes is not racist, to Anderson's defensive double-down on racist dog whistles as blight and neighborhood character, to Stone's careful maneuvering to the end with a shoulder shrug. Shoulder, shrug, shrug, can't say the word. Each council member that spoke repeated the talking point that this council is spending oh-so-much on housing, which is blatantly untrue. This city spends so much more on police than all social services combined. As hundreds of people have reiterated to you for months, it's unacceptable. As has been stated to you time and time again, police do not keep a majority of us safe. Police protect business owners and the wealthy. You have an opportunity right now to stop being a council that only represents business owners, the wealthy, and as well as the white majority of this town. The mayor presented you with a budget draft that absolutely does not reallocate funds from the policing to services that actually would keep a majority of us safe. Revise the budget. In countless listening sessions, the council comments, assemblies, and demonstrations, we have told you what we need. Don't pass the mayor's budget, pass a people's budget.
Thank you. Next.
Mona Galindo.
You there, Mona? Hey, go to the, go to the next one, Elizabeth.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm Mona Galindo. All right, so I am, I'd like to just speak a little bit on the action of defunding the police. I am completely against it. For officers who put their life on the line, helping others, they don't get paid enough, in my opinion. If we want change and better practices from our police, then why would we take any funding away or transfer it? Better practices requires better training. Better training requires funding. And speaking from personal experience, I was a past victim of domestic abuse, and I was fortunate to be helped by officers during that time. Now, I'm not a building, so I'm a person, and I know others that have been helped, and it was very much needed at that time. I believe that any type of reduction in police staff and department funding will hurt, not help, the most vulnerable-
Hello and well.
-those that are abused, homeless, poverty, and even people of color. I'm asking that you keep all funding and maybe put a focus on some training for officers that address racial and other sensitive issues. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Mona.
Dante Washington.
Are you there?
Let me just check and see if he's in the list. I don't see him in the call list.
Okay, go ahead, next name.
Brel Fraby.
Good evening. My name is Brel Fraby, and I'm a resident of the Birchwood neighborhood. On October fifth, at the city council review of the proposed police budget, Chief Dahl said the following, quote, "We've gone from six hundred thousand to sixty thousand hospital beds dedicated to mental health in the United States. As a result, severely mentally ill people are left without care, and many become the subject of a nine-one-one call. That has left your police officers working as default social health workers and our jails as default mental health facilities. Counsel, this isn't the fault of law enforcement, but law enforcement, law enforcement is left answering the call as no one else is available, especially at three o'clock in the morning. This isn't right." I completely agree with him that this isn't right, but as far as what to do about it, I strongly disagree. At the same meeting, Councilmember Lilliquist framed the current debate about how to approach policing in terms of better policing versus fewer police. He stated that obviously the city is taking the approach of wanting to fund better policing, but that, that his hope is that we could have both better and fewer police with the creation of a co-responder model where nine-one-one calls that aren't criminal in nature are diverted to a social services and EMT responder team. I've heard a lot of enthusiasm from everyone in city council for enacting this model, but as far as I'm able to tell, no funding has been earmarked for the creation of this. Mayor Fleetwood stated that there is a lot of complexity in figuring out this model and that it will be sometime in November when city council can expect some sort of proposal. Instead of slapping the label of behavioral health officers on three more police officers, who will receive only about sixty more hours of training, I urge you to reallocate funds from the current police budget so that in November, when the mayor submits a plan, it can be fully funded. I have spoken with someone who was one of the founders of the Kahoots program in Eugene, and she was able to lay out a framework for what the personnel needs would be for a fully functional program. I'm happy to share that information with you if you don't have that already, but it doesn't seem like it would take too much work to ballpark a budget for this. I also want to mention that in order for a co-responder program to be effective in gaining the community's trust, it is, it absolutely cannot be run by the police department. It also seems like a conflict of interest for the police department to be the ones determining what kinds of nine-one-one mental health calls are appropriate for a new program if that meant a significant future reduction in the police budget. I urge the mayor and city council to hold community forums to hear from the community what kind of programs would be most helpful. Something I heard from this Kahoots co-founder that was echoed by a member of the Incarceration Prevention Task Force is that even if we have a Kahoot-style program, if it isn't paired with adequate and high-quality access to housing, mental health, and substance abuse treatment, this program will do little to reduce crises because people will remain in constant crisis. Housing for the homeless, mental health, and substance abuse treatment is expensive. These are things that will also help the root causes of crime and crises. Policing does not-
Thank you, sir.
Next person is Rhianne Bardesley.
Hi, good evening, Bellingham City Council members. My name is Rhianne Bardesley. I use the she and her pronouns. I have been a resident of Bellingham since two thousand and seven and worked in community organizations for twenty-five years. I wanted to speak today on a variety of topics, but all center on the conversation you had earlier today regarding community members who do not currently have shelter. I will start with expressing gratitude to the council members who requested this conversation and encourage the city to take definitive action to improve the lives of people who are most marginalized. Bellingham and Wacom County has a robust homeless housing system that is quite impressive. However, the city has not yet taken a holistic approach when it comes to addressing poverty and racism, which results in an ineffective, hypocritical, and exclusive system. Some examples can be pulled from today's conversation, mostly from city and county employees who were responding to council members' questions. Some of the language included defiant attitudes, people not willing to follow rules, refusing to go to the options created by the community, those who do not seek shelter, etc. When staff talked about who was creating the solutions, it was not the people who are most impacted by the system, and I believe that this is part of the problem. Two hundred people who are not accessing shelter is not a sign of their refusal to engage, but a sign of our refusal to accurately understand what they need. It is a sign, it is a sign of white dominant culture failing to be effective and then victim blaming. When staff talked about not following rules, I question why those most suffering are held to a higher standard than those in power. An example of this hypocrisy is when police officers participate in cleanups but don't wear masks, or when police officers lie to public citizens, as Sergeant Johnson stated he did during the investigation of the abusive power incident in two thousand and nineteen, when they took advantage of a homeless and mentally ill human. These types of behaviors result in no disciplinary action for city employees, but result in continued homelessness and crisis for others. Additionally, I sadly admit that I do not trust what Lieutenant said during your earlier meeting when he described what happens at camp cleanups. I can't trust it because, as I mentioned, the BPD sergeant stated he lied to a member of the public, and there is no acknowledgement that this was a lie, and therefore, there has been no accountability for that lie. I do not trust that officers are following the policies and procedures of the Bellingham Police Department because they have demonstrated that they do not, and that this disregard for their own policies have little to no consequence. Like we are seeing on a national stage right now, there is no accountability locally for those with privilege and power, but people who are most marginalized and vulnerable are supposed to follow rules, or else they are refused basic needs like shelter. If the city and county truly wanted to end housing crises for individuals and families, thank you.
Thank you, Rhianne.
Mary Stidham.
Go ahead, Mary.
Hi, this is Mary Stidham. I listened to the Meeting of the Whole today, and I wanted to thank both Councilwoman Holly Huffman and especially Hannah Stone for addressing the homeless issue and saying that, that more needs to be done. What I'd like to ask is Councilman Lilliquist, why he hijacked that, that conversation and immediately changed it to saying that a new hot team member might be helpful? It's, that wasn't at all mentioned. It wasn't something that anybody said we needed more staff to be helpful for the, the two hundred-plus people that are not being serviced right now. But he then said that he wanted a hot team member, and then he said he could make a budget recommendation. Now, we've been told multiple times that council people cannot make budget recommendations, that those need to come in, from nonprofits in the form of a request for, for funds. Now, I guess that that just means that unless it's something that they want to do. I, I want to make it clear that we do not need another hot team member. What we need is more shelter. We need more options for the people that are in the street. We need options that are conducive to them and not to us. The base camp serves those people that it serves, and it does a fine job, but there is a huge amount of people that it does not and cannot serve, and we need to address that now. Also, to tag on what the previous speaker was talking about, the lying that is done by police officers, I need to point out that Chief Dahl lied to all of us about their existing policy for sweeps. There was never a policy in place until it was written late this summer, once Councilwoman Stone requested to see it. That is absolutely unacceptable. It was, we were lied to multiple times, all of us, as the community members and you as council members, also the mayor, everybody, we were lied to by Chief Dahl. I think that that's something that needs to be addressed. How can we trust our police if they are outwardly lying to us? I really think that, that this needs to be addressed, and I think that we need to defund the police by at least fifty percent, as has been requested by thousands and thousands of people in Bellingham. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Nuey Rappaport.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kai, and I'm a resident of Bellingham for three years in the Roosevelt neighborhood. I'm also a nursing student and healthcare worker. And today, I'll be talking about recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and also defunding the police by fifty percent. Today, there was a beautiful programming about Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I want to thank you, six years ago, the council voting to recognize this holiday as Coast Salish Day. But my questions are, it was an obvious choice to change this for Bellingham, but what steps have the council taken to honor this day? What about acknowledging we are on indigenous lands at these council meetings and, and just as often as reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? And as for defunding the police, I'm here to comment on Mayor Fleetwood's proposed budget and comments I've heard from our council members at the last meeting as a member of Wacom DSA. During the councillor's vote on the proposed protection zone around base camp near the end of the last meeting, I heard some of the council members lash out at remarks they received during the public comment. I found the tone of these remarks deeply troubling and symptomatic of a white fragility that apparently runs deep in its body. But I also heard a fiercely held belief that you are the good guys, that, as Councilmember Vargas said, "We're all trying to do the best we can." I hope that it's stunning for you to realize that many of us don't believe that, that we do see you, in the words of Councilmember Lilliquist, as heartless racists, as tools of people with money. One place this comes up is around homelessness. Multiple of you emphasize and reemphasize the millions of dollars the city spends on each year on homelessness and affordable housing. But I just looked over the Fleetwood's proposed budget. In that one, the police received thirty-four-point-seven million dollars. The low-income housing fund receives nine-point-nine million dollars. Even with three million dollars from the federal block grant and home funds, that's less than half of the money that goes towards policing. We pay more than double for service, sweeping camps and evicting people than we do actually helping- helping the people who actually need it, the housing. What's more, the police budget is drawn entirely from the cities, almost entirely from the city's general fund. These housing funds come from grants and levies. Until the police have a hold, have to hold a bake sale for their latest cruiser, they're, these aren't even comparable sources. All this is to say, I want you to be the good guys you believe you are. I want you to show us how you truly care about housing in this town, that you're all trying to do the best you can. But actions speak far louder than words. If you want to be the good guys of the story, then you should block Mayor Fleetwood's tone deaf budget and put the police budget towards services that truly help the most marginalized members of our community. Thank you, and happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Deana Jensen?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Happy Coast Salish Day, council members. You all work hard, your community works hard, and I thank everyone for their efforts. I want to talk about something I note is a recurring type of response from numerous Bellingham council members when a call for urgent action or anger or frustration is expressed by marginalized members of the community who are in crisis or by their advocates. Some of you representatives will counsel our friends and neighbors who are suffering or witnessing unstable, dangerous, crisis conditions that need to be addressed, that they are misinformed, or they don't fully understand what is being done to help, which right now are things that are not helping them while they are in crisis. Staff presentations often follow that amplify related past work that has been done by the government that currently is also not helping them while they are in crisis. BIPOC, who recently have publicly discussing the racism and mistreatment they have suffered in our community, will hear some of you leaders subsequently voicing your personal struggles and how hurt you are that you are misunderstood as a white person holding a seat of power over people's lives on the Bellingham City Council. When some of you tell people to be patient and how critical programs won't materialize overnight, along with how much money is being spent already and how much emergency shelter availability has been increased, you need to recognize you are saying that to all the people in unauthorized homeless camps, being notified they have to vacate their home in 15 minutes, and who are not offered a place to go at that time. At the end of today's Committee of the Whole meeting, when everyone was pressed for time, came the questions that should have been the focus of the meeting. Where should these folks go? That is the emergency work to be done. Hostile weather is here. Where do the homeless campers go? Where do people without a community center go? Where do the immigrants daily fearing detention and deportation go? Where do BIPOC children being disproportionately suspended from school go? Where do people needing emergency addiction or mental health services go? We are glad that we may be gaining on some long-term solutions. People who are suffering, they can't throw, throw a party. We do get to be confident and relieved that it will save community money and create a foundation for well-being in years ahead, but right now there are fires burning, and they need to be put out. If we hear you explaining how you built the firehouse, we will think you are ignoring the flames and smoke, but if we see you with a fire hose in your hand, we will know that you are listening. Thank you.
Marcus D. Stidham?
Hello, this is Marcus D. Can you hear me okay? Hello? Am I not there?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay, hi. Hi, this is Marcus D. I am, I have the, the burden and the great honor of serving on the Homeless Strategies Work Group as the county council, unanimously county council-appointed homeless advocate there. That is an advisory body. It is there to advise all of you, all of you, on homeless issues, and we specifically only talk about homelessness issues and trying to find, we're charged, you know, primarily with trying to make sure we have enough shelter for everyone in the winter is the main thing. For the last, well, well over a year, I've been consistently advising from that group, advising you to, to reallocate funds from the camp cleanups program and put that toward immediate emergency sheltering. Now, we've moved into COVID, and when we moved into COVID, COVID, it was also my burden and my privilege to be able to go out and attend to the sweeps and see what, see what was going on out there, the cleanups. What I saw was sweeps, by the definition that the police are now finally proffering. What I saw was sweeps, in every case, actually, because that's, whatever. I just, we can go, we can go round and round and round about it if you want, and, and I'm not going to, because what I saw is what I saw by the definitions that are now released by the police. I want you to know that the policy, it has holes in it. It even states that it never had a recommendation from the local health department. That's not true. And so what is our mechanism for reviewing the now, the just-born police policy on, on sweeps that was never even present before this? If, if it was about, if it was about procedures, then it was procedures. If it was about policy, it's about policy. I've heard those two words interchanged, and it really doesn't matter. If you lied about policy, you lied about procedure, whatever it was, that's what it is. Now, I'm still calling for, I'm, I'm offering solutions. We have, we have, on the Homeless Strategies Work Group, you can go to the comments section there, and on the record, I have submitted my entire observation of everything here that I'm, that we're all complaining about. Blow by blow, exactly what I saw, who was in the meetings, who said what, and who owes us one? BPD still owes us something on this. I don't believe that we're, we're doing the cleanups properly even now. I, I think that it's highly inappropriate to seek, to have language in your, in your paperwork that, that says, because there's a few rooms, a few beds at the, at the drop-in center or at the base camp, that gives us the right to move people along. I mean, why are we searching so hard for that right to move people along and not do what is right instead? If there's a chance for one of you to do a budget proposal to get this emergency shelter in which has been proper, please do so. Please do so, and do it now. Emergency.
Scott Smith?
Hi, are we there?
Yep.
Uh, hi, my name's Scott Smith. I just want to say thank you to the people that have recently helped out with a homeless camp in my neighborhood. We've witnessed public nudity, flagrant signs of drug use, littering, all kinds of bad stuff. And I know this is something that we all want to evolve, but keeping our neighborhood safe is a priority, and I just want to thank the people that have put effort into that. So, yeah, mainly just wanting to say thank you, and I hope that we can work towards a solution that keeps our neighborhoods safe and finds solutions for the lack of housing in our area.
Thank you.
Michael Stutehoff?
Go ahead, sir.
Hello. As you've already been informed by citizens, a Bellingham police officer is seen on a body camera not wearing a mask, coughing onto his hand, and then with the same hand gives citation to homeless man before evicting him. Displacing citizens during a pandemic is irresponsible and against Waukam County health instructions. BPD are doubling health risks with their disregard for state and local health instructions. Homeless citizens are unable to isolate and contort in, and are forced into public, where relations, support, and self-policing with fellow homeless citizens are how you survive and avoid violence. Many of these same people are unable to camp or also not allowed back in the mission or have legitimate barriers that keep them from the service and the mission's autonomy as a religious nonprofit. These same people are found around with their support around the mission, and you have forced them out with a new ordinance that pushes them off the street. So, and we spent 250 to 300,000 on these homeless sweeps annually, and nothing this year has changed in your response to the winter coming in this COVID crisis. You tell us that as a council that you will book the limited hotel rooms in our town and keep people from freezing to death, and I must remind you that hundreds of new citizens we force into homelessness from the eviction moratorium ending January 1st. This will put pressure on the demand for hotels as well. This is the dead of winter, and our new mental health facility yet to be built costs us way too much for what, 18 new health beds? 18. Have you seen what St. Joseph offers as a Christian organization? It's a white room. It's really creepy, and they have gadgets and buttons all over the walls, and it's, I visited a friend in there, and it makes no sense why these things are, because none of these things do anything for anything, just, and it doesn't make sense. We need full transparency of facility asset list of the buildings we do own, and that can help solve our problems in the most efficient manner. We need to take the budgeting out of the decision of the BPD around mental health and take it out of their power. Scandalized, they have played a prank on a man with sensitive mental health state, which everyone in the public knows about. It took full advantage of knowing of his state and the condition he was in. I've had my own friend, Connor Lee, who was brutalized by prison guards, and the whole culture is not what we need around our health. This is not a positive community policing that was being accredited to them, and what more are they doing? We need to be requesting more body cameras, it seems, because, and having this more available. But we needed to fund, and overwhelming evidence and all this trifecta is crazy hell and these mental backflips that council member do to avoid the obvious solutions.
Audrey?
I'm done. Hello, can you hear me?
Next person is Audrey Douglas.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I just want to let you know that I am completely for reallocating funds from the police to homeless services. I recommend everyone in this town download a scanner app and start listening to everything that is called in, everything that is done by the police. It's almost all related to homelessness, not really crimes, but nuisances for people that are not homeless.
Should I call the next name?
Yes, you, you did, Elizabeth. Go ahead.
Hello?
Finish, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Melissa Gregg?
Are you, I'm still talking, I assume. So.
Go ahead.
There is just nuisances. I worked for the Catchall Opportunity Council for almost nine years, and we had people dropped off all the time, some nude, mentally ill, addicted, they have no mental health services, no security, no nothing, yet the police leave people there, and in fact, I overheard the police say, "Let's let them deal with this and stay in their lane." And yet, the police had to come back to pick them up because there's no services. There's nowhere for people to go. You can go to the hospital, but you literally have to be stabbing yourself in the neck to be taken in, and it's a free country. People can go in, they don't, they're not forced to unless they're committing a legit crime. So, so much money's out there that needs to be taken from some of the highest paid police in the state and given to services for the homeless, not only the chronically homeless, also the invisible homeless, women with children, significantly, boys. Many of the shelters that are available to people only accept females. Women with boys are sometimes forced to go into the woods, far into the woods. That bothers some people, and I am against the sweeps. Some people lose all their belongings, every photo of their child they ever had, and if they're not at their camp, they're working many times, just like the gal who jumped my car at Safeway.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you, ma'am. Next. Melissa, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Go ahead.
All right. Like, I don't know how to make you guys like acknowledge that we're humans and, and care about that. Like, we, we come here and we pour our hearts out, and it feels like this three-minute sessions we get is just pandering to us. You, you don't listen, you don't hear anything we're saying. Like, the fact that you're unwilling to cut anything out of that budget, and someone like me literally cannot get any services, like, this is, like, I just, I'm sitting here like crying, like literally crying, because all I hear is people talk about how these police need all this money, but those are the same police who let a pedophile live next to my kid's school. Those are the same police who screamed at my child when I tried to file a report against them because they wouldn't help me. And you just, you just don't care. You people just sit here in your comfortable places and just, you don't give a shit. You don't even like me, like you hate me, like, everything I've done is a response to the trauma and not being heard, and you just don't listen, and we've got hundreds of people out there that are even worse off than I am, and you sit around and you just keep making things illegal, and, and you don't help them, and now we're in a pandemic. People are gonna die this winter, and, and you're just sitting there, you're just sitting there doing nothing. Like, what is wrong with you? Do you people have consciences? We're dying in the streets. Get off your asses!
Next, go to the next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Next speaker is HK.
Go ahead, sir, ma'am.
Hi.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, this is Heather Kattaden, Bellingham resident since 1989. Very interesting afternoon council meeting this afternoon in regards to our unsheltered citizens' needs and challenges. Thank you, councilpersons, for your thoughtful and direct questions you pose to our hard working staff. We, the citizens, are watching and listening to our city staff and our elected servants. We appreciate the best efforts you each make. I have some asks that I've stated before. We need alternative winter shelter options now, not later. It's cold and it's wet outside now in mid-October. I'm actually speaking to you from outside on a mobile gadget as I visit friends during the lockdown to stay safe. We need to accept the offer to build a second tiny village that Doug from Homes Now Not Later has sent to the city in writing, and who continues to mention this offer at numerous public comments for many months over and over. And we need to give our city public work staff clear directions to prioritize all our city citizens have access to minimal resources to ensure they can meet their own basic survival needs, like potable water, land to lay down on and rest at night, and hygiene infrastructures such as public bathrooms and porta-potties. And outreach citizens need multiple property addresses identified for emergency overflow during this upcoming winter. We can do this as a community. Stay well. Thanks for listening, and thank you each so much for your hard work. I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dean, I'm back. My computer's up and running, and I don't have anyone else signed up.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yes.
Okay, we will now go to the mayor's report.
Good evening, council. A few things tonight. First off, just as a formality, the appointments, I'm reappointing John Blethyn to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and I'm also going to be appointing Paul Randall Grater to the Parks and Recreation Board. That is only information, no vote required. I'd also like to join Council President Knudsen in honoring and recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, and of course, we recognize that today here in Bellingham as Coast Salish Day. I'll say no more about that. I appreciated your comments on that, Council President Knudsen. Reference was made to ongoing budget. As you know, I provided mine to the council on October 1st, and you're presently reviewing. The public at large should recognize, of course, that the work sessions- Uh, the public at large should recognize, of course, that the work sessions are ongoing through, uh, November. Public comment periods are available, of course, today. Uh, others can get budget and related materials, uh, that are posted on the city website. So I'd, uh, urge those that are interested in getting more information, um, going to W W W dot C O B dot org forward slash budget. Uh, also, we heard a lot of people express themselves, uh, tonight regarding issues of homelessness in our community. And I want to thank people for giving public comment. I'd also like to highlight, um, the excellent presentation on this subject that was. Given today during your council meeting in the, the committee of the whole, um, on homelessness. Um, lots of good information was provided. I'd urge people to, uh, go to. Meetings dot C O B dot org. If you want to get more information, you can watch. The, uh, presentation that was given and the questions that were asked. There were some wishes to follow up and have additional conversations around questions that, um, people posed tonight. Um, and we'll be coming back to you very soon. Um, finding a time where we can finish the conversation that I think council wanted to have, uh, when we ran out of time at the presentation. Tonight. Couple of items that relate to COVID nineteen response. I don't know if anyone noticed, tonight was the first night we didn't have a formal COVID presentation. That was by, by design. Uh, we didn't think that it was necessary to have the health director here tonight, but. There are a couple of things that relate to it that I can report on. One, playgrounds. Uh, been a lot of requests from a lot of community members. Um, to open playgrounds. As you know, they've been closed since March. Um, and we wanted them closed during the summer when there were lots of people out there. So the playgrounds are going to be reopening. Um, by the end of this week, uh, as I said, they've been closed since late March as part of our efforts to help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. We are taking this step with the support of the Waukun County Health Department. And been a lot of other local, uh, and regional park systems that are reopening, uh, playgrounds as well, including, um, Seattle. We're doing this, as I said, in response to many requests from park users. I know there are a lot of families that are seeking outdoor activities for children. Uh, weather changes have reduced the park use, lessening the risk of large gatherings. And of course, there are going to be requirements relating to safety protocols. We're not going to be disinfecting the play structures, but we will be, um, asking that playground use be limited to not more than five kids per play structure. Masks required, um, and there'll be more announcements, uh, in the next few days regarding this. Also, I want to take this time tonight just to announce that there have been some, uh, changes as it relates to the Waukun Unified Command. Um, we're taking steps to merge the, uh, Waukun Unified Command into the Waukun County Health Department organizational structure. The Waukun Unified Executive Board, which is made up the sheriff, uh, Alumination Representative, myself as mayor of Bellingham and, uh, county executive Sub-Paul Sidoo. Have worked, uh, together, um, with, uh, Waukun Unified Command staff to, uh, make this change. Members of the public, city employees, partner agencies, uh, and those needing services are unlikely to notice. The changes. This is part of, uh, an expected evolution of our response. These changes will help create a long-term. Sustainable organizational and staffing model for the duration of the pandemic. And pay, taking the step now to ensure we have the resources we need. And sustained support to effectively continue our response and prepare for, among other things, mass vaccination efforts in the future. Scott McCreary, um, the current incident commander will retain his role, reporting to the health, uh, department director. They'll jointly report to the Waukun Unified Executive Board, um, in meetings as, as necessary. City of Bellingham will continue to have staff presence in the response. We currently have five, uh, staff members devoted to the response effort. Again, this change is largely behind the scenes, but will help us build on our already successful response and ensure it is, uh, effective. Over time. So I just wanted to alert people to those things. Um, and that's all back to you, council president Knutson.
Thank you very much, mayor. Uh, we will now go to our standing committees. This morning at ten AM. We had a special meeting on the budget and it was chaired by finance chair, council member Pinky Vargas.
We had a slight change in our budget meeting today. We were going to do the fire department and municipal court. But the fire department is a significant part of our budget, um, which had a lot of questions to it. So. Um, we, uh, were given a briefing by Chief Hewitt, uh, around budget changes for this year. Uh, they are not, um, they are not hiring any new employees. Um, so their budget is pretty consistent with where it was. Um, last year and we did move the municipal court budget to next Monday. Um, and we, uh, every Monday, pre-see after today, there will be a budget meeting either before council or in the afternoon. Uh, until November ninth. So we will go through every different department in regards to our budget meeting, uh, until, uh, November ninth. Um, when we will do a public hearing. And that's all I have for budget.
Thank you. The next is planning community development chaired by council member Holly Huffman.
So today we had a presentation regarding the public-private partnership to redevelop the former Aloha Motel. At three fifteen North Samish Way into a mixed-use, mixed-income affordable housing development known as Samish Commons. The city purchased three fifteen North Samish Way in September of two thousand and fifteen through a settlement with the property owners after pursuing condemnation due to blight. The city demolished the Aloha Motel and put the site on the market by issuing a request for proposals. The Bellingham Housing Authority, or B H A, was selected to redevelop the site with a mix of approximately one hundred twenty-five housing units, serving a range of incomes. The new office headquarters and commercial uses. The project now underway implements the community goals embodied, embodied in the Samish Way Urban Village Plan. The presentation covered the roles of the city and B H A and how this partnership benefits the community. So, uh, this is a project that depended heavily on the housing levy or the home fund, uh, to get started. Four point nine million dollars of housing levy funds were used. Or will be used by the end of completion, uh, to leverage over seventy million of additional funds from other sources. Once completed, there will be one hundred seventy-two affordable rental homes. And that includes fifty-three for seniors, fourteen for families transitioning out of homelessness. And twenty-five apartments for family, uh, families living with a member with a disability. Uh, and currently there are discussions happening around the possibility of a childcare facility on the premises, which is great news. Um, it was a really great presentation. You should check out the video of our committee, which you can find at meetings dot C O B dot org. Um, you can see a lot of images of what the facility will look like or the property will look like. Once it's completed, it'll be done in several, several phases. The first phase, um, will be ready for tenants in May. So, um, you, you can also find, uh, on that video, find out what will happen to the Aloha sign, which everybody is quite curious about. So. With that, end of committee.
Thank you very much, Holly. The next item is Public Works and Natural Resources chaired by council member Michael Illicus.
Thank you, council president. We had five items in, uh, the Public Works and Natural Resources Committee this morning. Uh, the first of them was a bid award for on-call electrical services. Um, which are called indefinite delivery and indefinite quantity contracts, otherwise known as a unit price contract. Basically for specialized electrical services, we simply contract with someone to deliver and then the amount depends on the work needed. Um, it's a not-to-exceed amount over three years of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars using an hourly rate, um, by the winning bidder. Um, under the bidding scheme, the lowest response of the responsible bidder was Zika Electric with their bid of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-two cents. Um, this afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended approval of this on-call as-needed contract and ISO move.
Has been made by council member Illicus, second by council member Stone. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The second item was a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five Water Use Efficiency Program Goals and Measures. State law requires that municipal water suppliers, um, adopt a new goal and at least nine measures. Every six years to ensure long-term quality, supply reliability, efficient operation. And management of the water system and to promote good stewardship of water resources. The tax resolution adopts, uh, a new, um, plan with has the proposed goal and the nine new measures in it. For the next, uh, period covering the years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Um, one of the items that drew some attention is exploration of changes in the rate structure to further increase, uh. Water use efficiency. Although our population has been growing, the. Per capita consumption of water actually has been trending downward, which has slowed the increase need for water use. And that's the sort of water efficiency that we're aiming for. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended approval of the resolution.
On logistically how the mayor's office would like that to be handled.
Well, I'm just thinking back on experience from back in the day, uh. After we've had the.